There we go, there we go, alright, okay. It is six o'clock, I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order, so Darcy, if you call the roll, please.
Moore, Mar.
Here.
Moody.
Here.
Ingstrom. Engelhardt.
Here.
Thank you. Item three is the Pledge of Allegiance, everybody, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, item four then is perfecting an approval of the agenda, and it's a one-item agenda, so is there a motion to approve it? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Alright, thank you. Alright, we are here tonight because of a dog incidents, and there was an appeal filed on the charges. So ladies, if you, I'm gonna start out with you, so come on up to the podium, please. And we are broadcasting tonight, so give your name, please, and...
My name is Wendy Johnson.
Thank you, that, just pull it right up to your mouth, please. There you go.
I'm usually pretty loud. My name is Wendy Johnson. I live over at the trailer court. And I have a dog that y'all gotta get rid of. But he's not what you think. This dog really is a gentle dog, however, he's a puppy. He's a big puppy. He doesn't turn a year until next month, and the next month. And he's quite active. And there's, there's been two incidents. But the first incident is, I don't know if you read up on everything, the first incident was Maya and her friend were walking the dogs.
One dog, or?
No, uh, three dogs.
Are they all yours?
All mine. And, um, the brothers and sister, and then I have little Russian toys, which is the box of all of them. But, um, they were walking the dogs. And Emily had one, Maya had the other one. And in the trailer court, there was a chihuahua. This chihuahua was known to go after people and other animals, and that's what happened that day. The chihuahua came after the dogs and the two girls. And instead of backing up, Emily got in between them, which caused injury. We followed instructions completely. The dogs don't go out unless somebody's with them. We do have the chain outside the house, and it was, um, a chain that was recommended by Thorbeast. And we tie them down. Well, the kids in the neighborhood that had the chihuahua, they teased them.
They what?
Teased the dogs. And the dogs, because they're eleven months, they're the Elkhound, um, uh, Massive, uh, Great Dane, and, uh, Blue Heeler. So they're, it's a big breed. They thought it, they were playing. He lunged forward to play, 'cause he, he hops back and forth in the chamber. And when he got up to the child, he was pulling the shorts down. And I guess he caught the child with either a paw, 'cause it wasn't... I was out there. I, I didn't, I couldn't tell if it was a paw or a tooth. And I'll be honest with you, I couldn't tell. But he was playing with it. He was pulling on the shorts and everything, and of course, the young child, big dog, gets scared. I am willing to do anything for this dog. Putting muzzle on, walking. This dog is very gentle. He's there for her. When she has, she has psychological problems. When she has an anxiety attack, this dog is right there, barking, "Hey, look at me, look at me, look at me," licking her face, pulling her out of it. When she has her tremors, he's right there, laying right next to her. He, he's a, he's a natural when it comes to emotional support, he's a natural when it comes to emotional support. He really, the two police officers here have both of the dogs, they're hyper. They're hyper. But they calm down fast. I, I, I am willing to do anything, just give me another chance to prove these dogs are not bad. Doctor Sarah has examined them. In fact, two weeks before the first incident, he got neutered. And he was on an anti-anxiety medicine. Doctor Sarah has never had a problem. I, I, I can't believe this.
Okay, so the dog, the one dog was out on the, on the, out on the yard with the, the chain?
There were two of them, yes.
There were two of them?
Yes. And one, one broke.
Okay, now did the child...
I think, I think the guy ran over the, the leash with, with the lawnmower to cause it.
And so it was weak?
So it caused it weak, because, and we showed them the, the latch that was on it, and it's a thick cable.
Yeah.
Had come right off.
So now did the child, how old is this child?
I think six, seven, twelve?
So now he, is he, is he a boy?
Yes.
Okay, so this young boy came to play with your dogs, or?
No, he, he was with the other kids, and they were at the edge of the yard. And the grandmother was across the street at the mailbox. I live, i-if you're familiar with the area, there's the baseball field and the basketball court. I'm, I'm the trailer that faces that. And, and I mean, there's never been any incidences with all the kids that come to the basketball court. There's never been an incident where, you know, these dogs have gone after them, they bark, and then they calm down.
My question is, did the child harass the dogs, is that, is that why?
Um, they were nee, but not, you know, throwing anything or that. But it's usually when they walk by, you know, normal kid stuff. But when the dog broke loose, this kid turned and ran.
Of course, the dog did.
And, and of course, the dog was already thinking, "Hey, he's playing with me." And took off. And we got it right, too. It, it wasn't like, you know, the kid was being walked, I, I mean, the dog was literally pulling the shorts down. It just had his shorts, that's why I think he caught him, 'cause of where it, when he got him, it was about right here. And it was maybe a quarter inch long. And, and it was, it, it looked like a scratch, it wasn't deep, it wasn't bleeding, it was, you, you know how you scrape, and, and, but he had the kid's shorts, and was with the shorts. And, and we got right there. But I mean, I, I, I've just got a second job to go with a job that I have, so I can afford a, a, an enclosure. You know, i-if, if that, that's safer, uh, I can get a, a thicker table, I happen to get one anyway. There was one gauge higher than, than the one I got, because they recommended it up to a hundred pounds. My dogs aren't a hundred pounds yet, they're sixty-something pounds, that last weigh-in.
Is there two different chains then for the dogs?
Yes, two different chains. Two different chains, I have them wrapped twice around the tree and latched.
So did the kid have stitches?
No.
Does the dog have rabies, vaccinated?
Everything's up to date, I...
It wasn't at the time, though, was it?
Yes, it was.
Was it?
Yes, it was, Doctor Sarah did it.
Okay, I, I heard that it wasn't.
No, it was, um... Yeah, Doctor Sarah, um, vaccinated both of them in February, gave the booster shot to this dog in Mar- in March, because she performed, um, the neuter. She did a neuter on him in, in March, it was two weeks before the first incident.
This, this one's Tiger we're talking?
Yes.
Tiger was vaccinated on February twenty-sixth, and it was a one-year vaccine.
Oh, yeah.
Well, my, if he's under six months of age, he's supposed to be redone?
He had, he had the booster. The, uh...
He was more than six months, well... He'd have been just at about, his birthdate is nine twenty-five of twenty-four.
And he got, he got neutered at six months, I made sure at exactly six months he got neutered. And that's when they gave him the booster shot, they said it was an additive onto the one shot that you have to get it within three months.
That was out at the clinic today, and it was, the rabies is up to date. Tiger, Sunny, and Venus.
Venus is my Russian boy.
So was it, which one?
Tiger.
Tiger is the one, that's the one that we're talking about?
Yes.
What's the breed of Tiger, did you say?
Tiger is Blue Heeler, Massive, Dane, and, uh, Doug the Melkow. So he's, he's a big dog. Right now, he stands about this.
What, he'll weigh a hundred pounds eventually, or more?
Um, that, I don't know. I, I'm assuming...
He's a cross-up, I'm happy to tell.
Yeah, that's true. And something that matters.
In February, February twenty-sixth, he weighed thirty-eight pounds. As, at the June twenty-fourth, as Ben was neutered, he weighed fifty pounds already. It's so in two months, four months, he being fifty, twelve pounds?
He's, so, he really is gentle, he, he really is, and, and the officers will tell you, you know, he's a little, they're hyper. They're hyper, but they calm down, yeah. I, I wanna get him trained for the, the emotional support, because he is so good with her.
And he's an emotional support dog for who?
For her. But he has never been trained. It, it's just natural, I wanna get him trained to be the emotional support. As I said, when we were walking in, all right, when she has, she has PTSD, ODD, RAD, ADHD, she's my Alf Beck kid. She also has tremors. When she starts having anxiety attacks, she can't breathe, she's just emotionally erect. And this dog will jump up on her lap, bark, get her attention, kind of grab her, eh, lick her face, you know, grab her attention. Like, hey, and, and will, will gently, you know, tap on her, hey, look at me, look at me. Brings her out, and calms her down. When she has a tremor, 'cause she has tremors, almost like a seizure, but she kind of joins out. The dog will come over and sit next to her, if she's standing, he will stand right up against her on, on his side, and just stand there, and, and then I'll kind of nudge her. And, and he does this naturally. When we first moved, we moved because she wasn't feeling good, one of the reasons is because she wasn't feeling safe. She was abused by somebody. Uh, beat up by a, a grown man, an alcoholic. The man was kind of stalking us, and we were told, "There's nothing we can do. It's public property, nothing we can do." And Matt will tell you, I've called several times on it, both him and the DA, there's, our hands are tied. The kid doesn't feel safe. And, and a little Russian toy just wasn't doing it. That's why I originally got the dog. The dog's key became so much more. I am willing to do anything you ask. Now, very few of you asked for obedience training, I, I would be more than happy to do that. But you gotta give me a little time, give me a time period to do it, because I just got the second job. And classes are three hundred and fifty dollars a dog. So for me to get him the training that that would be required, you gotta give me at, at least a month to acquire that. But I'm willing, I'm willing to, i-if you would feel safer with us walking to him with a muzzle on, I will go with a muzzle. I mean, it, it, where we live is not a lot of traffic. There's not a lot of people that come around, they come over to the basketball court, there's never been a problem. And, and the incident with these kids, the, the second incident is with the families that had the chihuahua. How that's related, I don't know. I'm just letting you know, so they're, they're familiar with that. But I, I will...
Okay, go ahead, Devora.
Sorry, and, and I'm sorry if this was mentioned, it's hard for me to hear very clearly, but what were the contributing factors that made the police department, um, decide to give the order to remove the dogs from town?
Do you want to let law enforcement talk now?
Yes, you guys, uh, wanna come up and, did you hear that question from Devora?
So...
Come up.
Please come up and, and...
Start, who was the first officer that dealt with it? Okay, start with JT.
JT, you wanna tell us who you are, please?
Sergeant James Cunningham, Sergeant here at the police department. So to answer Devora's question, all dog fights had been reported. So we had to document and report them, send them off to...
So does the person that gets, that grandmother whatever called in, they called the police department?
So first time, yeah, uh, mother did it. Call.
Your mom did?
Yeah, uh, mom, well, mom asked somebody who spoke English to call, but, um, wanted me to come there. She said her that, exactly what Wendy said, was that she was walking the dog with. I'm so sorry, I always struggle with Maya. And that a chihuahua came over while they were walking, and she said the same thing that Wendy told you guys. She got in between them, and it resulted in bites to her arm and one of her calf muscles. The second incident was...
Which, oh, him?
Uh, the one that's in question, Tiger. Um, and I spoke with Wendy after that incident, she was aware of everything told me.
Excuse me, was the chihuahua chained up?
From the information we had, the chihuahua was loose. I never didn't, I never located the chihuahua after that. Uh, but now I...
It was not, it was going against the leash law?
Correct, yeah.
So the lady that got hit wasn't the owner of the chihuahua?
No, it was my, my, right, that was walking.
Okay, so she's the one that got there?
Yeah.
For the chihuahua to get in, okay, definitely.
Yeah. Second one was...
Second one? To the chihuahua, I don't really?
No, chihuahua was running, nobody should have been there. Yeah.
Yeah, but they didn't find whose it was?
Didn't find the owner? Didn't know who the chihuahua belongs to?
Not at that, not at that in there? Uh, now it's at this, where we, the neighbors, the neighbors know, it's okay.
Yeah, our, our neighbors had the chihuahua, the chihuahua is not there anymore.
Okay.
It, it was a nuisance, and they were warned about it, and they just let the chihuahua go, so anybody walking down the street, the chihuahua would go after, or cars, or... And, or, or would come over and, you know, try to attack my dog, or one of the neighbor's dogs. So after this incident, um, the owners told them, "No, you've gotta go eat him."
Sorry.
Uh, second incident was, um, well, Wendy had spoke about, about a six-year-old boy who, um, where the tiger went after him and caught him here in the left thigh, uh, left upper thigh, it was back. Um, did have a little broken skin, but not all the way through. The mom asked if the dog was up to date, and I told her about when the last time he was, so yes, he is. So she did not decide to go to the hospital with the child, but I'm still following the dog bite, I still have to, so I'll form a submitted department health.
Did you mean it was a bite, or there was a scratch?
Well, I, I took a picture of it, and if you want me to show you guys, you can make that determination, that's, that's a battle for it.
So how far apart were the two incidents, please?
First one was...
What's it, uh, May, early part of May?
June seventh.
June seventh, and the second one is...
Yes.
Yep.
This is the bite before?
June seventh, and then the first, and then the second one is August eleventh. Yep. So this, this will be the first one, or the second, sorry.
I'm sorry, I, I'm used to her leaving his name.
So, I'm the one that you would have spoke to on the phone, I called you about the dog, making sure you got enough state.
Yes.
I do the animal bite investigations for the county.
From the court?
No, from Elmwood County Courthouse.
Yes.
So, that's me. So.
I suffer from work. Yes, he usually goes away in the summer. I couldn't tell if it was a juvenile or a fox, but I, I could not lie to you.
I've seen a lot of pictures with what I've viewed, as have you. That's pretty minute compared to what I've seen, but I'm never gonna downplay a bite, a bite's a bite's a bite in my book.
Yeah, I, I could not tell.
You might as well.
Might as well, if you got it. I don't get all of the pictures, I need to get them boring.
And part of the breed is Massive?
Yes.
Yes.
And is that on the list of those breeds that we, we are not allowed in town, and do those have to be pure breeds?
Matt's saying, no, it's not on the list.
I believe it's not. That list changes all the time. It's just a pitfall.
And I told you on the phone that, I had worked out I couldn't tell, but that's the reason, and, and you couldn't tell which dog it was, or him.
Well, and that's why I made you bring all of them up to date on vaccinations, because when you don't know, they're all jumpy.
Yeah, well, they were already updated.
At that point, yeah, they were, but that's just, but they still have to do the ten-day, uh, visit after.
So any more questions for JT? You guys?
My, you've met the dogs, you've met Tiger above all. Can you please let them know your impression of the dog? Honestly?
Honestly, I haven't been around him enough, I mean, the only two times I've been around him are these instances. So I don't... I'm, I'm not trying to be a biased party on either one, I'm only talking about my report. Yes, when I was there, I mean, yeah, I was barking, but I, I can't say like his behavior, 'cause I, I don't know.
Was he aggressive toward you? Was, was he physically aggressive?
Was he attacking me, but I, but I can't say sometimes answer on that, 'cause I don't know.
Jacob?
Hello, I am Officer Dick Connor, Police Department, so I've dealt with the dogs two times now. The first incident occurred on July nineteenth, when a male in a truck laid me down while I was conducting my police duties, and informed me that there was two dogs running loose, um, at the truck. Um, so I informed them that I'd go over there and take a look, and see if I could handle the situation. When I arrived, I parked, um, just north of Wendy's house, an open lot. And I got out, I started making my way towards her, um, her house, and that's when the dogs kind of ran around the corner. Tiger, his hair was kind of standing up, and he was growling and barking, and they kind of circled me, and at that point, I believe that it could possibly have been I was kind of worried with the two dogs there, as well as the guy, was, um, one of the neighbors. Um, and I wanted him just to stay in his car, and he was afraid to get out, as well to go home, uh, if he were beaten. Um, the dogs did calm down, I kind of put my arm out, let him smell me, and there you go, let me pet them. I took them around front, I tried to make contact with residents, no one's home. I got them on their leash out front, like she said she has. Um, I still continued to go around the house to see if I could get someone to come out and take care of the dogs. At that point, I couldn't find anyone, so I took them to the city shuttle and gave them food and water. Um, the second instance is on August...
So the dog came up to you then, and was friendly, and left you taken to the city?
Uh, after I dealt with them, the first initial action, they, I was scared out, Wendy, the, their hair was standing up and barking and growling. Um, but they did calm down, and were fine after that. Second incident occurred on July seventeenth, when I served Wendy the notice for her dog Tiger. I knocked at the door, I'm waiting for her to answer, or someone at the residence to answer, then informed them.
What day is that?
Um, August seventeenth, at approximately seven fifty-six in the morning. Um, I heard the dogs barking, she's got a window, um, just west of the door, um, I saw the dogs in the window kind of jumping and barking. I stepped back off the porch to wait. Um, a few moments later, I heard some rustling, the windows more west of the house, and at that point, they break, like, break out of the window, and um, I saw Tiger, his hair was standing up, and he was barking as well as all their dog. And at that point, again, I thought, believe I possibly could be bitten. So I rushed back to my truck and got in squad car to grab my duck, um, well, it's in order to deal with the animals and kind of protect my hands. Once I got out, um, they ran up to me again, and were kind of more friendly at this point, and were jumping around. Um, that's when Wendy noticed that I was outside, and that her dogs were out, and she was able to get them inside. So those were the two incidents that I had.
So those are two separate from, from what we just heard?
Correct, yes.
Because of the fights, something?
Yeah, no fights upon hell.
They're, they're a typical dog, barking at a stranger, and then finding that you're okay, and...
Correct, yeah. Was he growling? Uh, which, both times, yeah.
And you said the dog broke through the window?
Yes.
Went through the screen.
Yes, yeah.
And that's because you were out there?
Yeah.
Any questions, more? Jacob?
Is there a lot of kids up in that trailer park?
Um, to my knowledge, there's a couple of homes that have some kids, and then there are occasion like soccer games or baseball games, but I see a lot of people go to, at that baseball field, to the south of the house.
So how far is Wendy's path from you?
Oh, yeah, across, probably about... Oh yeah, across, probably about 50 yards or something.
They have the, is it a pickleball? What is that? A pickleball in that right, right across the middle in basketball hoop that? They both get utilized quite a bit.
And my dogs were tied up and, you know, they'll bark at the initial, you know, oh, somebody's over there. Hey, look at me. And then they calm down.
It's usually pretty busy around four in the afternoon. They kind of show up and play.
Do you guys get calls for nuisance like barking?
I personally haven't. No, I can speak for the other officers.
For nuisance barking, no.
And he said, they're, they're not bad dogs. They're really not. And Tiger really is not that aggressive. Not aggressive at all. But once, the once he gets the dog and he smells you and he sees your dog, he's threatened. He's quick with you. You know? We, we held him long enough to get me. Once he settled down, that's there was somebody who there, he sat.
I've got a copy of my report too. If you can, if you can sort through it or skim through it.
Well, my thing, and I'm gonna step in a way of city council person and talk like, as I initially met you when I'm doing my animal bite stuff for the county or border health and, um, just in general, but so. I only get notified when, when somebody has been bitten, attacked, scratched, whatever you want to call it, by any animal whenever they go to a medical center. Okay? So the medical center and law enforcement is required by code to give me notice that that has happened, that they have received medical treatment. Now, I don't always get a notice from law enforcement if they've been told, but maybe they didn't go to the medical centers. It's, it just kind of depends on the call. All right? But I had my staff the other day just put together some numbers and so this is just, just dogs. Now, I, I mean, I've had anywhere from squirrel bites to opossums to you name it, but this is just dogs. From 2020 to August, it was just last week. So we've had total dog bites that were reported to a medical center. Reported 108 dog bites. Of those 108, 19 were in the town of Postville. Of those 19, 10 hadn't even been vaccinated. Now, kudos to you that yours were vaccinated. That's, that's wonderful. So then I had her break it down into the breeds of those 108 bites. And not meaning anything more that there's one breed over the other because we had a teddy bear carry or bite somebody, you know? You know, what are they? Like a little, you know, stuffed, you know, cleaning rag. Um, up to a, a Great Pyrenees to a, a full blown Mastiff, you know? Any dog can bite. I've also found that most of the time the dog, most of the time, isn't at fault. It's the human. But when there's kids, kids don't have, kids don't understand that you don't go and take food out of their mouth. Kids don't understand that you don't sit there and go name, name, name in front of them. When they're barking and they're on a leash. Your kids don't understand that you don't take off running. The dog might think it's play. The kid is not petrified and running for their life, you know? So there's gotta be a, a, there'd be something that has to give. You gotta get a fence. You gotta get a muzzle. You gotta get training. You gotta, and I'm not gonna lie, you gotta get your bill paid at the vet clinic. You say you're gonna do anything for these dogs. You gotta get that bill paid.
I have a bill?
You have a bill. So if we're gonna do everything for these animals, then we're gonna do everything for these animals. And I can just give it to you right here. Because these vets are not, it's not their jobs to hunt us down to pay our bills. So that is due. That's as of today. You can have that. But I give you credit for having them vaccinated. That's only good for one year. So come February, you're gonna have three dogs that need to get vaccinated again. You're gonna have an office call and three, three, uh, injections, uh, probably over a hundred dollars. You're gonna have that bill. You're gonna get training. If you're gonna get a muzzle, you better get two because they're both gonna get big.
I, I, I will do that. I will do that.
You gotta get a fence.
I, I'm gonna get one of those enclosures. Like the, the outdoor. Yeah.
Well, you know, I would not recommend that because no, a dog can come into your yard.
No, I'm, I'm talking about, um, kennel, kennel. Yeah, one, one of those.
If they can be a big one, if they can.
Yeah, it's gonna take me about two months to get them for like $500.
You know, and keep in mind too, you've got a, you've got two very large breeds that need places to run and burn off energy.
To Decorah behind Walmart, there's a dog park and we, we let them play there. Uh, it, it's not like they're always cooked up in the house. We do take them out with us if I have to go here or go there. And, and she's with me, we, we take the dogs. We, we go.
I mean, they're, they're gonna continue, they're gonna get 100, 140 plus pounds.
Right.
They're gonna be huge.
Right. I, I, I will do everything. I, 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 as soon as I, I get the money for the kennel, they will be in a kennel. I will get, until then I will get a, a thicker gauge cable. They will not be outside unattended. We've been walking them. They won't be unattended. I will buy muzzles for them for when we do take them for a walk.
I would think at the dog park, that would even be a wise thing to protect.
Well, there's usually nobody gathering where to go. So I, I mean, because I deem that they have no training. I don't want to. Exactly. Well, we do take them to see, um, their parents, uh, their, their, uh, mom and dog, uh, parents live in Decorah. So we, we do go down. So they do interact with other dogs. My, my little Russian toy, uh, beats up on both of the big dogs, you know? So they're all used to being together.
So if you've got, you've got two jobs now, are you gonna have the time to do all this?
Yes. Yes. Because the one is only part time. So it's only like one or two days that, that I'm working there. And then I work in the morning at the other one and she's home. So yes, we do have that. Yes, she does.
May I say something to them?
You bet. Go ahead.
Sorry, I, I was just gonna say a couple of things that I had and I'm sorry again if it was, um, said and I didn't hear it clearly. Um, you know, I think the rabies vaccination is a very, um, important issue that you brought up and it is good that they were vaccinated, but a dog can also cause a lot of damage without giving rabies to a child, you know? So that's just the one thing. There is aggressive behavior that has to be stopped, even if the dog is fully vaccinated. And then another thing I wanted to say is I think all of us, um, we all have knowledge of an incident that happened recently with a dog that was very, um, trained very specifically and very highly trained and specialized and, um, you know, was, was in a very high, um, uh, position in, in the city. And even those dogs, um, even after being very trained and everything, there's a difference between being trained and having like an internal aggressive behavior or an aggressive streak or something in the dog's history that can make a turn on a child or on its owner, no matter how much training it's had. We've, we also had a German Shepherd who went through puppy training and behavioral training and started on that good canine citizen, I think it's called, training. And this dog just had a very high prey drive to any other, not children, but to any looking creature, anything on four legs. That dog would attack and we had to, we ended up having to chain it in the back of our house on, on a very strong chain. And it wasn't fair to the dog. And so this dog was perfect around children and was very highly trained. It was a very smart dog. But it just had a high prey drive that like Dr. Sarah said, you can't do anything about it. It's just that, that dog's personality. And, and I think the problem is being that we don't have animal control, um, in Postville. And the only thing we do have are these ordinances to, to gain trust and to build trust with, with the safety of the public and the citizens and children. We, we can't, I, I think it's maybe a dangerous thing to set a precedent where, where we have these rules that, you know, there's two incidences within 12 months. We, we have to get rid of the dog. If we, if we start, um, being flexible on that, I think that it sets a very dangerous precedent, being that we don't have animal control. And we, we don't have anything to go by except for these ordinances. I, I think it, it might set a dangerous precedent and, and put the safety of, of the public at risk, you know, you, it doesn't matter what kind of cage you get, you, you won't be able to stop another six year old, you know, from coming to a bigger dog and maybe teasing it or if another Chihuahua comes along or whatever it is. So that, that's just what makes me, me nervous is that, you know, we, we don't have a specialized, um, animal control, uh, you know, board or whatever it is. And so all we have to go on is this ordinance. I, I think it's, it's maybe a dangerous thing to, to set a precedent where if a dog does violate what the two incidences within two months and then we start being flexible and giving the time and saying, you know, we'll, we'll train it and we'll do this and we'll do that. Um, it, it still puts, I think, you know, children or other dogs in danger.
Okay, thank you.
Our first incident, it wasn't the human. It was the situation and it was an aggressive dog that came after the other two dogs. And she had walked in between them. It wasn't my dog intentionally going after the Chihuahua. My dogs were actually acting up to get away from that dog. This dog, uh, aggressive dog. This dog is really a good dog. And now that he's coming into it here, he's calming down. He's at that stage where he's calming down. He's not a puppy place. The, the hyper puppy. He's a good dog.
Correct.
There's so much more to her.
All right. Well, so tonight, uh, you folks have to make a decision on, uh, uh, either abiding by what the police say or, or not. Uh, that's kind of how this all boils down to.
The, the police recommendation? No, it's the chief's order that the dog be removed from the city limits.
Due to the fact.
Due to the fact of the bites.
Bites.
So, one stop, would you please come up to the mic though please? Cause we, we are kind of broadcasting out and, and yes.
I have had Tigers since he was one month. He has not left my side since. He is a very hyper dog. I will give you that. He's not aggressive. I've been walking him. I have walked him in the past. He's been around children. He's been around other people and not once did he get aggressive. One day, night, we were walking past the junior league baseball game. A kid came up to him. Didn't ask me if he'd pet. Didn't ask me whether or not you can pet him or not. He came up to him. Put his hand out and started petting him. I've had friends around this dog. He's never bit any of my friends. He's, he's a good dog. He really is. He's my dog. When, like she said, when I get to the point where I can't breathe and I'm on the floor crying, having my panic attack and my anxiety attacks, he's right there to help me. All I'm asking is for one more chance. Cause he's not a bad dog. He's really not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so. You have to decide.
I would like that the, uh, can we ask of this one, I don't, I don't call this closed session, but I think the people involved here, you know, leave the room.
You can. You're in an open session. No.
Okay, I didn't know. I just thought I should ask. So.
Whether it's a yes or no, is that how we do it? To make a motion?
You need to make a motion if you're gonna overturn the chief's direction to remove the dogs from town. That's the order that's been given by the chief of police.
Can the dog be, uh, removed from the city, trained and then come back? Brad?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, right now, uh, if we, you know, leave the city, get the training, come back.
Come back.
I hate to see this euthanized, you know?
Right. No, I'm not saying the dog needs to be. I've never met the, I've never had any issues with it. I'm just, just going off of what the two officers had had dealt with this dog.
And filing city ordinance.
And filing, and we're filing city ordinance. Granted that I did see the dog a week ago, which it should have been in quarantine, but it wasn't. It was outs, outside my door, crossed on alleyway on a leash. I didn't go near it. I mean, I looked, I saw the dog and yeah, but it's gotta be in quarantine. If they happen to find a home outside of town and it gets trained to where like they said they're gonna do, go through the training. And they can come back into town if it's all, you know, you know.
We don't know anybody outside of town that can take the dog. We, we really don't associate with anybody. And the dog's parents, they can't take any other dogs.
Wh- where's the, where's the training that you're looking at or thinking about doing? Where is this located at?
Well, her respite, uh, uh, the lady who works for emergency services in West Union said that the police department have some kind of training program where there's good decorah, there's a training.
The Good Dog Center?
Yeah, I, I guess. I don't know. Uh, I have to look at my numbers, uh, my notes. Uh, the ones that do have the board and train are like $3,000 and I, I just can't afford $3,000.
Without the board, I think even just the training itself is gonna. A month or a year?
For, uh, the.
How do they run it? I don't know. Is it like whatever you want to pay for, for sessions or is it a set fee? Set of the month?
Is that a good dog for you? Where's yours at?
My dog, yeah. I took her to the Good Dog Center when it was down in town for everybody, um, culvers.
Oh, yeah.
Now it's a farm.
Not built.
Not built.
And after, after it all's said and done, they gave you like the proper paperwork saying it graduated from this category or this.
And they work with certified trainers.
Yep. Yep. Yeah, I, I would say, yeah, if the dog can get trained completely, it, it can come back to the town. I mean, but right now, my opinion is that it's putting a li, a big liability on the city. I mean, if it happens again, say if something, okay, say it gets wavered tonight, say, well, okay, we give you one second chance. Dog gets out tomorrow, bites somebody and the city knows that if it was a vicious dog or it had bit, it, they can come back in the city.
I, I went and I got a kennel for in the house to, to put him in the kennel for when I have to leave. So he won't be getting out of the house. I have a kennel.
Then how's he show up outside your office then?
Do you ever walk in it?
Um, I had a.
I didn't know about it.
Um, Caden Hightland.
Yeah, I know him.
He helped me walk a dog. He has met the dog before. Never once has a dog barked, growled at him.
But was the dog not supposed to be?
At the time the dog was. Dog wasn't supposed to be.
Know. I got my dates.
It was, it was, uh, it was supposed to be quarantined because they had. It was, it was, uh, of course be quarantined because that was in the timeframe.
Right.
That's why I was like.
I just know he knew that.
I'm like, you needed to get that dog, shouldn't even be outside right now. It needs to be quarantined.
Right. Sounds a bit like we have more irresponsible pet ownership here than we have bad dog. I'm sorry, but that's this this looks like a pattern of dog getting loose, dog getting away, breaking the chain. There's there's a bad pattern of behavior here.
It won't happen.
And I don't, I don't care. We're gonna, we gotta go by the patterns. There's been a pattern that's been. A bad, you know, the bad repercussions here. So.
I mean, I don't want to see any dog have to leave town. I don't want to see any dog leave their family. I have dogs myself. But you still have to be responsible for what your dogs do. And. Just the two incidences with the dog and biting or scratching, biting, that's. One thing, but then when the officers or someone comes to the house and the dog comes out the window. That's another thing. That's kind of frightening.
That's why I have the kennel for the house. Some things like that won't happen again.
Why did it happen the last time? Why, how did he get out the window? That, yeah, I agree with that. That's very scary. You didn't have a kennel at that time or?
No, I didn't. You got it since.
I I I got it since.
Since all this happened. So how how? How would this work? Let's say that. You have to take the dog over to that place and she has to pay it, or I mean, I know she's gonna pay it, but I. How does it get there? We take it away from her, she can't get it there.
It's the owner's responsibility.
I know, but what I'm saying is, how can she get it there if you take it away?
We're not taking it.
We're not taking it away. We're not taking it away.
Oh, you're saying it can't be there? Okay.
Yeah, yeah. It's owner's responsibility to.
Well, I know.
Yeah, yeah. No, we're not taking the dog.
Right now, the order is to remove it from the city.
No, no, no.
They're gonna.
We don't have anybody else, so.
Well, I'm just saying, what I'm saying, if if we have, give you like thirty days to get that dog. Good dog in the corps, for instance, that. Well, but I mean, many days for her to start it.
Right.
I mean, the classes, the classes, I know you have to have it once every, every week or whatever, however it's worked out. I'm just saying that she has some time to start it. Like, let's say you have thirty days to get that dog enrolled in that class.
And I will, I I will call them tomorrow. I will send them up to the first class. I can get her in, get him in.
Okay, so.
I mean, you're gonna have to a lot, have a lot of stipulations with that because if that's the case.
And I will follow every stipulation.
I mean, I hate to say it, but that dog will have to stay on their property or in that house the whole time. You can't be out walking that dog. Out in the public. On on a leash.
It has to be in the house or at the training center.
That's, that's, that's your guys' recommendation. I mean.
Or out of town walking.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, I guess I I, this is the first time for me in this.
Yeah, um, like I said, I'm not trying to say the dog is. Is the dog and the owners both need to. Training on the, on how to raise a dog. And the, I don't.
Now, when you do this, now, as I said, this is my first rodeo, so. If they, what do you do? You give them so much time that get the dog removed? Is that what you normally do?
That's what was served, yes.
That's.
That's.
Part of the meeting tonight, that's.
Okay, well, I just, I just wanted to.
Yeah, this is my first rodeo on it too, so.
Yep, so they had seven days to get the dog removed. They had three days to come in and file an appeal of the chief's order. They filed the appeal, so that's why you're here tonight.
Yeah, that's why we're here tonight.
So if you, yeah, if you uphold the chief's decision, then the dog's gotta leave the city limits.
As of when? Tomorrow?
Yeah.
I guess, um, and I'm a dog lover and I haven't heard you in a long time in my life. Um, but, um. We also have to think that right across the globe, I mean, it is a ball diamond, a soccer field, or, you know, pickleball. I mean. Those kids are our responsibility too, you know, we need to watch out for them too. Um, and I know probably a lot of what's happening is kind of puppyness, you know, um, but we just, yeah. Here's what bugs me the most. That little Chihuahua that was. Breaking the law, the parents of it were breaking the law because it was on a leash, that never would have happened in the first. That's what pisses, part of my question.
For the first one?
Yeah, yeah.
No, the second one, I'd like, I wasn't there. That was all J P stuff.
Yeah.
You know, that.
Most kids should be trained too, not to go up to strange animals. I I go to the park all the time with my dog, and most of the kids, they say, can I pet your dog? Is your dog like this? I say, no. I don't want to take a chance.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'm, and I'm, I'm stuck because like I said, with what I've seen in my reports. I, there's some really foolish pet owners and there's some really foolish animals. Most of them are foolish people, um, because they're not, they're not doing their animals any good. Um, my concern honestly is the mere size of these two. Two dogs. One seems to have a little bit. More of an aggressive pattern, but there's two. They're gonna be a hundred plus pounds. So I'm honestly thinking that maybe two should be looking at being a little better trained. Not removed, trained. So, because that is also the potential, you'll be right back in here if Sunny decides to. Have a payday. I have seen, I got so many reports of, I just had, just, and it's taken me about two weeks to get it all muddled through. A three year old versus a pit bull. And a pit bull wasn't even allowed by breed to be in the city of Wakan, but yet there it was. And now I got a child with a face bite. Not because it was mad, it just decided to, they were the same height. And. So. Well, that wasn't, you know, here again, I got a child and I got a dog. You know, I. I I I'm really drawn because I I feel your pain because I know also what dogs can do. Cause I love the crap out of my three little idiots. Especially the little fat fart that got running loose this morning, so I know that they too can get loose. He jumped through an electric very fast.
I have a question for you. Is there any way, like, you can go home tonight and call the parents of the dog? I, and just say, uh, give me five days so I can make arrangements to get them in a. Place for training.
I could try with this, if they could take any dogs in that they're under the little law board.
Their what? Oh, they have a, they have their renters, so. I wish I had a place. Well, it's like the words that too. We have experience of a trained dog with a trained person. And, you know, they're dogs, but, you know, they can revert back to the wild, you know, and.
Wow, and those. The Mastiff and the Heeler mix, honestly.
That that Heeler scares me.
That Heeler is what, honestly, of all of them, the Heeler scares me the most. I don't care what the percentage is. But, so. And the one that was gonna lose out the most is this little girl right here. It's not that we're saying the dog has to be put down. That is not what we're saying at all. Okay, I don't want you to think that. But this one's, okay?
There's some boarding kennel at someplace that would allow you to train some labor for boarding of the dogs while this is all going on.
What's that?
Is Terry Dawn?
That'd be all through the.
She's in city limits.
The animal rescue and so, yeah, I'm not for sure.
She got them firm it up because she's still in the city.
George Jackson, you know.
Well, I know at one time, um, the gal north or south west of Wakan, used to help out with. Boarding dog, yeah.
I don't know if they do, I don't think.
Dewey's passed away.
Yeah, he's, he's gone, yes.
Yeah, I know the wife helped out a lot with it, but I don't know if they still.
So through that one. Well, the objective is still to, you know, make a decision, you guys, so, uh. I'm up with something here. It's a tough one.
Larry, what do you think?
Well.
I'm gonna, I guess, you know, we can have discussion, we can have a vote. I'm gonna move that we uphold the police chief's. Recommendation of the dog be removed from the city limits. Uh. And that, uh, and the owners seek to have the dog receive training. Uh. Have the dog receive training before it's allowed back in the city limits and we get proof of the training. Proof, documentation of the training that's received before we let it back in.
Dude, did you hear the name that you, uh, Terry Dawn, she's a, um, doesn't she work with the rest? She's a part of the, yeah, part of the. She, yeah, she would know someone who might know someone, so, uh, yeah, that could take it temporarily, so. You know, we have to have it.
Is there a way I can get in touch with her?
I'll see if I can get a number.
Alright, so I'm gonna read that back, Darcy.
Mo- well, motion by Moore to uphold the police chief's recommendation and for the owner. To seek. Training of the dog and to give documentation before the dog is allowed back into the city limits. Is that right, Larry?
Okay.
I would second that, but with the, um, furtherance that. Before, you know, if that time comes up, then that the animal's vaccination records also have to be. You know, make sure that they're up to date as well.
You okay with that, Larry?
Larry, you're right.
That would be an amendment.
Yeah.
Cause they'll, they'll be coming due.
Are you okay with the amendment?
No, we don't, cause we haven't.
Return with vaccinations up to date.
Yeah.
Cert- certification of training that's been received.
The only thing I ask is if you can give me a few days to find somebody to take them.
Yeah, I'd say so.
Is that okay?
What's a few days so that we know?
What's a few, yeah.
Uh, can I have one week? That's all I'm asking. That way I can, I can go through my contacts at work and see if somebody at work can take them.
Do you have Facebook?
Yeah, I have Facebook. What's that?
Is that, is that okay? We can put, add that in the motion too if you want.
Would the dog have to be quarantined while?
Yes, uh, yeah, Devora.
If we're gonna allow it one week, then I think if there's any other incidents, the dog is euthanized, put down. Put down immediately. You have to understand the gravity of the situation. So far, like I said, the dog's probably not as much fault as what the pet owners are and that allow the dog to escape. Stuff happens, miscommunication, you gotta get it right.
And you cannot take the dog outside of the home. Except to put it in the car to drive it away somewhere.
Bathroom and stuff.
Or to take it out to walk if it needs to be.
It's just like quarantine requirements. It has to be on leash to go out to feed.
Basically another ten day quarantine.
Another ten day quarantine, yeah.
Well, one week is.
Or one week, yeah.
Yes, well, Devora, did you hear that?
Yes, yes, I was talking about the quarantine while while we did the week.
Exactly, so that that dog will stay in the, in the home?
Right.
And will not be allowed out.
Right.
Okay. Is that okay? Okay, that, well, yeah, okay.
I had a second from Moody already. Was there another motion I missed?
No.
We, no.
Okay.
We were just talking, we were talking about the quarantine time, you know.
Okay, yeah.
So.
Larry?
Larry made the motion.
Lori.
Okay, okay.
You need to have red back again or you're good? The motion?
Okay, motion by Moore to uphold the police chief's recommendation, the owner is to. Seek training for the dog to, before it is allowed back into the city limits with proof of training. The animal is to have vaccinations also up to date. With certification training before allowed back in and a seven day quarantine. Be, to remove from city limits. What, grace period?
Yeah, seven day.
Grace period.
Following the quarantine.
Following the quarantine, if the dog, if an incident happens again within the seven days, the dog will be euthanized immediately.
And also are we, are we, um, being more, do we have any clarification on what kind of training? I mean, is it puppy training, like sit, stay in heel, or good citizen canine training? What to stop any attacks against people with dogs?
Obedience training.
Obedience training, Devora?
At the Good Dog Center.
Right, right. I mean, I I guess with Carmen's, um, recommendation that obedience training is enough to. To potentially stop any other attacks on children.
Yeah.
You know, a dog, a dog might have obedience and know how to sit, stay in heel and lie down and beg and wait, but if it's still.
Is.
You know, attack.
Is that basic? What, what is all included in that basic? Training there for the dog? What's it called?
Um, well, the basic of puppy training is just, like I said, sit, stay.
Sit, stay.
You know, basic, basic obedience like that, yeah, toilet training, things like that, but, um. Then she has like a step above that, I think, which is the good citizen canine, I think, of course. Which is, which is more, you know, the behavior when people come to the door.
Mannerism, good citizen.
Running around, not, not running off to children.
Sounds like that's what.
That's probably the one that they would need.
And that one's under forty-five dollars.
Right.
A hundred and forty-five, there's for seven, there's seventy-one for the day, but, yeah. That's pretty good. And you can't miss, that's. That's pretty good. I wish I didn't know about that.
I would just go with the both of them, basic and the, and the one you were just talking about.
Good citizenship.
Right.
The mannerism, one, the good citizen, whatever, go with both of them.
Right. Yeah, I mean, that would be my recommendation.
Alright.
Like I said, you can't miss. You have to be there each week, you have to be there each week.
Yep, that's how you do it.
No, I tried to get somebody to come back, some good dog.
Alright.
We get, uh, we, I mean, we're still in discussion. We've had a second, we're in discussion.
Yeah.
We have to review this whole case before we allow it back in the city. Documentation.
Yes, yes, it's all there.
All that stuff, documentation. We'll have to review the whole thing.
Yep.
Do you understand?
Yeah, I, I'll call them tomorrow instead of.
And we need to go, get that bill cleared up with the best. You need to get that cleared up with the best.
So there'll be an agreement that the city attorney will require her to sign to then.
Yes.
They're gonna keep charging you ten dollars if you don't get paid, so get it paid.
Okay.
So in this deal, Wendy, too, then with, the city attorney will have a copy of this and you'll have to sign that also. Alright.
Agreed.
The agreement, yeah. Okay, how we doing? Ready to vote? Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Alright, that's, so. That'll be the order, alright?
Alright.
Okay.
Do I need to sign that now?
We'll have to draft it and we'll let you know.
Yep, we'll let you know. Alright. Oh, yeah, is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no, alright.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Have a good night.
Yeah, you too, Devora.